Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 10th, 2017. Now called to order at approximately 7:00 p.m. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? At this time, I do please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. The first item on this agenda this evening is an A&R plan at 39 Lancaster Street, but at this time, we have two continuances. And for members that are in the audience to attend, I'd like to see if we can just vote to grant them a continuance, and then those people that are here for that can leave. So, the 720 applicant, Eastland Partners Incorporated, requesting a modification to an approved definitive subdivision plan known as the Reserve at Ashworth Hill located off Blaker Street, is requesting a continuance to 11717. Do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
Just a continuance. You make the motion to continue then. Eastland Partners.
Is there... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. The next applicant is Prades LLC requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the proposed use of a beauty shop on properties located at 781 Southridge Street and 4 Appleton Road. They would like to be continued to 11717 also.
I'll make the motion to continue to 11717.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good day, A&R.
I do.
Next is an A&R plan at 39 Lancaster Street.
Good evening, members of the board. Here are... This is a, excuse me, a transfer of land from the Outlaw Water District to abutting landowner at 39 Lancaster. Outlaw Water District owns an incredibly large collection of parcels that make up the driveway rate of the water district and its property, and they are giving a small portion of property to the abutting landowner. Otherwise, the survey and everything checks out and meets all the requirements of our subdivision rules and regs. Fairly straightforward plan, but it has frontage, the transferable lots, so it does not own a lot.
Is this going to be combined with a lot, fully?
Yes.
Is the total, what, 50 feet of frontage?
In this district, they need 100 feet for building a lot. 10,000 square feet.
No, I don't know if it's a major point. Can we condition it that they give a deed combining the two parcels?
Not through the A&R. That's prerogative. They, I believe it's the owner's intent to...
It'd be the smartest thing to do.
Section office parcel, and at that time, I'm sure they'll take care of that.
John, any questions?
No.
No, sir.
And for me?
So, just looking for a motion.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve the A&R.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. For the law.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just be creative on that one. I say it again. I say it again. I just said it. 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 I am, sir. Board doesn't have any votes to take, because it just had the applicant submit the additional documentation as requested, and it's been provided. If the board is satisfied, no further action needs to be taken. I have a draft decision already based on the vote from the first meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, would you know if we needed a solution for that?
I don't know that.
Okay, I'll ask. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. I'll select.
Okay.
Applicant is Andrew Watton, Impact Fitness, requesting a modification of an approved site plan under section 3.2.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the revision of an access driveway on properties located at 314 Washington Street.
Motion to open.
Have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the meeting?
Let's start him out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Pete Alonah, Connor Stone Engineering. So, Pete Alonah is back here in the audience, the applicant. So, we were here in the spring earlier this year, and we had site plan approval for the proposed fitness center at 314 Washington Street. And what we're here for tonight is to modify the rear access drive, going around the back of the building. So, this is the currently proposed plan, and this was actually the approved version. So, on this one, they had utilized proposed easement that had gone around the rear portion of the property to give a little bit extra space, to just give room for development of that driveway. What they're looking at now...
Where was the easement? We just went up.
This is...
The higher green piece?
Yeah, this kind of, this strip right here.
And where was the driveway going to be on this one?
Then, on this one here, they're looking at the option of taking it off there, keeping the driveway entirely within the property.
And the easement was someone else's property?
Yeah, so it was on the abutter's property. So, if you look on this one here, the driveway itself was a couple feet into the easement right in there, and then a couple feet into around that side right in there. So, what we're doing now is trying to keep this entirely within the project limits. And there's two pinch points, and those are right around the corner of the building, and that's where the design constraints were. Right here, we have 20.6 feet from the building to the property line. So, essentially, what we're doing is matching the existing grade at the property line, so we can pave from the building right up to the property line, just giving that little bit extra to fit in, you know, the soap fence. And on this side, we had 23, 24 feet, a little bit more space, but we have grade change in there, a little elevation constraint to deal with. So, to match grade at the building, we held grade there, came across, and then needed a short two-foot wall on this side. We have about three-feet-ish to fit that wall in, two and a half feet, so being a two-foot high wall...
Is the wall only going to point it out for right there?
Right in the... Yep. It's right there.
What kind of a wall are you going to put?
Two feet high. It can just be those small blocks even, or we can even use boulders or something like that. Being that high, it doesn't have to be reinforced with anything behind it, it doesn't have to be structurally designed. It's just kind of to retain some of the water right there.
Where your driveway exiting that enters Millbury Street?
Yep.
How far is it from the center of that driveway, we'll say, to the stop line at the traffic light at the intersection of Washington?
This is 100 feet from here to here. So, from the center of it, about 130. Yeah, 130-ish. So, the only, this out remains the same, the revisions are kind of limited to kind of right in, right in here. The design of the parking lots, the upper and lower remain exactly as they were before. Our revisions are limited to that back area. Other than pavement, the only thing else we modified was, we had a discharge from the overflow of the roof drain, one up here to the abutter. Instead of that, we connected it into the drainage system on-site. So, rather than right here, go out through the system to the same ultimate wetlands, just a different way to get there.
Just through the chair. Is that what it applied to, the changes in the drainage calculation?
Yeah. Just showing the different routing of the drains going through.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. Was there an increase or decrease net to impervious surface?
There was, I think that there was a decrease overall. I can just quickly check, I have the numbers right in here. I believe there was a net decrease, so 13, 230. See, we have the old one in this one there. I believe...
Sure.
13, 750. So, there's a slight decrease, about 400 square feet. So, almost the same, slight negligible decrease, but no increase at least.
Millbury Street driveway, right in, right out?
Yeah, that one, we ended up doing, in the end, we, I think we, originally, we talked about that, and then at the end, what got approved was either way out, but only right in. So, it's restricted on the in-turning movement, just in there, no in from this direction, both ways out.
You're supposed to make that island.
Yeah, it's got a little...
So, you can't make the left-hand turn coming in.
Yeah, it's got a little hook to it. The sign is right in the island, too.
So, it's right in, and...
Yeah, right in. I think the intent was so that you queued up, you wouldn't, you don't want to queue up.
Out is right only, too.
No, out is either way.
Either way?
Yeah. I think the intent was so that if you came around this corner, people tried to...
Oh, the island you're extending is that in the driveway, not the one that's in the middle of the road on Millbury Street?
No, it's just this one.
I was going to say, how would you cross it?
Yeah. So, one in there, that island is just kind of like a half triangle, I guess how you describe it, pushes you one way.
And Route 20 on Washington Street.
And that's the similar thing, we have a right turn exit only, I think that was the key.
Right in, right out.
And then, you come in this way. I think we had both ways, both ways entrance was the exiting, so you didn't have to cross both of them.
Yeah, five minutes, Chairman, this is free from the condition of approval, we had, and this seems consistent. The applicant shall work with the town engineer to update the approved plans, modify the curving at the Washington Street egress, the timberhead left turns, which we see, the left turn's exiting the property, excuse me, and to modify curving at Millbury Street egress to allow left turns exiting the property. And those are amendments that were to be made to the plans following approval back in May, and it looks like those have been made here.
May I ask a few questions?
Through the chair, is, how did the tree removal go? I don't think most of them were down.
Yeah, I think we've done tree removal.
The ones near Route 20?
The ones along Route 20, I don't know.
But yeah, the whole tree removal has been finished. Anything left is just like, the two trees left on like Route 20, just low, like clean up underhangs, but the majority of the tree removal has been completed and shredded up.
Scott, any questions?
Neighbor would you give the easement? No, I think they were in negotiation. I just opted for this. I don't think they never completed the negotiation and talks.
Would we like to ask the abutter, who is here?
Yeah, I thought, I was going to say, is that one of them here yet?
Since we are, I'll just preface this for me, we did receive a letter from Fletcher Tilden about the easement being on the neighboring property in the abutters, and you guys discussed this with Mr. Coyle at a previous meeting, that they had asked for rescission of the plan so that it's, because it's not something that they agreed to. So, it's why we're here today, they submitted your modification, I assumed you guys were communicating in regards to that. But one of my sticking points is having received that letter from Attorney Donahue, I just want to make sure that the abutter is satisfied with the proposal, and make sure it's not later crashing the property before we were to proceed.
My name is Marty Raxner, I'm from the Auburn Industrial Development Corporation. We own the property at 100 Millbury, so this is our civil engineer, Capco, his name is Chuck Budnick, so he just wants to confirm some of the details of the plan.
Okay.
Okay, we've got, we've got reduced copies here, so some of them are kind of hard to read, but, uh, the first question, uh, on this driveway over here, uh, is that curved? Uh, it's hard to read that out here, it's hard to interpret.
No, well, we didn't put curb on this side just to save space. What we've done is created a gutter line that directs all technical space, so again, it's almost like-
But how do you contain the drainage from the, from the, uh-
Just with grading, um, the draw simple. The driveway's in blue, yes, basically.
So you've got like a swale?
Yeah.
On the right-hand side?
Yeah, swell on the right-hand side, near the edge, uh, so it's not going to break down the metal drive, uh, to impact anything that will contain it. So you've got about a three-inch reveal, uh, in that swale.
But that's gonna contain all the drainage?
Yeah, so it's similar to a curb, except we've made it so it's drivable. It's a three-inch reveal, uh, so the flow will just come down. It's only sectioned, so we continue-
Excuse me, why don't you all come up here? Put that up on the board and all, everyone stand up here so we can all hear.
Put around the table?
Good job, I want to come up.
So what he was asking about is along this backside, right here, is whether or not we're gonna have curbing, um, and right in here, we were so constrained on space that we didn't want to fit another foot worth of curbing in there, um, so instead we created, created the driveway, you know, the building is this side, and with a little swell, this is the property line over here, um, so you have a three-inch, kind of the driveway grates like this, um, so that-
All on the edge?
Yeah, all on the outside edge. So that's what contains the runoff going down this edge right there. Similar to what a curb would do?
So it keeps the water on the driveway?
Keeps it on the driveway.
Instead of going onto his property?
Exactly, I think that was the main concern.
That is a concern, right. The, the second, the second concern is that on the plans, it shows a number of snow storage areas, and I believe there's one in here and there's one over here that abuts on my client's property. And, and the question is, what contains the runoff from that snow storage, uh, on, what contains it on your property and not getting onto the, my client's property?
Well, snow storage isn't a factor of the peak rate or volume really, it's a slow release. Um, we could pile it somewhere else on site, uh, if needed, um, you know, it's typical to just plot to the edge of the property, um, or the edge of the pavement like this. As far as peak rates of runoff, snow melt really doesn't affect it because it's a slow release, like I said, it isn't an instant event like a sto, like a, a rain event. Similarism, you plow, you know, everyone puts snow to the sides of the roads, similar effect is that, um, you know, I'm sure they'd be not having it there, there's plenty of space in other areas, um, it's just a convenient space, hasn't come down, uh, right in that location.
When the plow comes down and pushes the snow, is the snow gonna go over the embankment onto our property?
If they kept, you know, weren't responsible with it and kept pushing it and pushing it and pushing it, um, we'd have approximately 15 feet in that location, um, so there is sufficient space. You'd have to go really push it pretty far in order to get it off there, um, you know, the, you know, and this is pretty visible now with the, with the tree line right there, uh, we'd be able to see if anything had gone the line.
May I ask a question?
You guys went to Conservation Commission also, right? Did they discuss the snow storage locations in relation to the wetland areas?
No, they didn't bring it up or no one brought it up as a concern.
It's, it's common, it's-
Yeah, it wasn't really a discussion item at any of the hearings.
Well, depending on what kind of storm, you could have a lot of snow. So where would you push it? Cause in the front, you're not gonna, that's gonna be all the landscaping area in the front here?
Yeah, open this.
The area, so you really wouldn't be putting it there.
Yeah, I mean, you just have limited spaces. You, some along in here, in between your trees, you have some in here, in there, you know, like we said, there's some in here. This area down there, once you get too full though, you need to start taking it outside.
Do removal?
Yeah. It's just one of the conditions that they have to deal with on maintenance with a site like this, where they try to max out the parking, um, you know.
I have a couple of questions for the chair.
Yes, sir.
Did the slope change along the backside of that building, right around the corner? You got 60% here now, what was it originally?
10.
That's a huge increase.
So with the new plan that you've just brought before us, it's gone from 10 to 16?
That's right.
That's pretty steep.
Yeah, we're trying to keep this a short skirt, so you can just go up.
Usually only have an 8% grade, correct Matt? That's, that's unsufficient, but still.
The other question I had, instead of putting a swale out to one side, why don't you just put it in a reverse crown?
You could do it that way. Uh, this is basically a reverse crown, like you're saying, uh, just push to one side, push the crown, the reverse crown slightly further away, um, same basic idea as you're saying.
Other question, John?
Probably good.
Scott?
Do you have anything else? Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
So, any public comment?
Is it possible? Is it possible to be, you know, to put a fence on?
Along that back edge?
Yeah. You know?
Asking about it. Asking about it.
No. Like a chain link, just to prevent a majority of it from coming?
Cause it will slide up against the, the fence and create a, create a barrier. It would just, where would that be so they can understand where?
Pardon me?
Where, where would they want to build that fence, that chain link fence, just so we can keep it in the areas?
Well, I, I think along here is, is the main area right here and then down here.
I want to make sure.
Like you said, so, so that it can't just run off over, be pushed over on your land. And be in this area and right in here.
How far is the next building to this property? What's the next property look like, yours?
Just vacant land.
Just vacant land?
Yeah.
How do we clearly define what areas approximately that it's on here so it doesn't come back and get done and the fence was too short, not too long?
We're not necessarily requiring a fence yet. We're talking about a big-
Right.
Mr. Chairman, are you asking to clearly define snow storage areas? Or just, uh, you're asking to clearly define snow storage areas or pencil?
No, pencil question.
So Chuck, just, let's just try to make more sense if it was one continuous line.
Is there some other option that you guys would be able to like-
Right here?
Posts with signage or something like that at intervals? Something that's easier to install?
You mean have intermittent?
Yeah, with something with signage on it, so if people plow on the ground, you know.
I don't have it working.
I don't know, just, just thinking of other options and stuff.
Yeah, if, you know, once, once you get somebody behind you to plow, they're not gonna, they're not gonna read signs.
Okay, so if this is snow storage Chuck, and this is snow storage, then it's gotta run basically, I would think, this is all our property over here, right?
Right, if, if you- That one's plenty of space, I would think it's just gonna be, this one's plenty of-
There's plenty of room right here?
I would think, from this point-
Yeah.
Or something, to that point or something like that?
Yeah, and then maybe turn and bend it here, but to just, to just get it contained-
So maybe just like the footprint of the building here? Maybe just like to the footprint of the building?
Excuse me, how about you both parties work together?
Yep.
And present it at the next meeting? Come to an agreement of something and present it to us at the next meeting?
I, I can tell you where, I, I don't, I don't want to hold anybody up here, so as long as they can just do it in this area right here, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, that works.
You can see-
Why don't you mark the print?
Yeah. All right.
Something like that?
Yeah, I think that alleviates the curbing issue and the snow issue, so.
For four foot or six foot cyclone?
Four is, you got a broken four, just they take a cost now.
Let's, let's, you know, it's ever more economical and fine with them.
It'll be higher than the driveway, right, for the grade? It's gonna appear a lot taller than it is. Oh, well, unless that actually, I think we're up, the driveway should be, actually you guys are right up here, it's gonna be up, so it's gonna be up higher.
The fence?
Yeah, and some portions up and some down.
Oh, we want the fence to be-
You got some up and some down. In this corner, the grade here is higher than the drive, right here it's lower, so it's kind of a, up and down, within a few feet, so.
Probably stuck.
Your fence will follow the line of the driveway slowly by, so.
All right.
I just have one more question. On the increase of slope from, uh, 10 to 16%, what's the reason for that? I mean, just moving the driveway closer to the building to create a steeper grade?
Yeah, well, when-
Can you weigh the lesson there?
Cause what we-
Somebody coming in here in the wintertime, they don't get the standout, they're going right down to the corner.
Yeah, this, the reason it got restricted is right through here, we have limited space, so to fit, to change the grade, to keep it at 10%, you need walls on both sides of the front, both sides, they just physically can't fit it. Would have to go to a shorter, uh, less width of a driveway, you know, to do that, um, you know, like a 16 foot driveway or something like that.
Is that gonna be, is that gonna be two-way?
It's two-way.
Yeah, you gotta meet and out and come in from-
That's why we kept it at 20 feet, um, you know, for a short section like that, um, you know, there are a lot of parking lots out there, we have, I know I was in our office we're at, has a short section, 20%.
How much room did you need for the wall and what would the driveway width be then?
If we were to put the wall here and here, just to get a little separation between your wall and your building, you don't want to butt them up to, to be able to pass through there, uh, I think we were gonna be at 16 feet. We could maybe sneak out a little bit more, I pushed them-
How big of a wall were you gonna put?
That one would be, I think it was a four foot on one side and-
What thickness?
And you'd probably end up using those bigger blocks, something like a two-foot block, cause you can put a, those ones you can put the guard rail type restraint on the top, so the small blocks you can't, um, so that's why I was gonna use the bigger blocks if we did that, cause you'd want some kind of guard as you went by the building, uh, we need something, piece of that off. And when we're at grade like this, we have the, the guard on top of this wall and then we have ballads at the corner, a lot to protect the building itself. So that's, that's the reason we went to the steeper grade, is just to keep the 20 feet of pavement, um, and not have to go reduced pavement width down.
You wouldn't put a concrete wall there, like an eight or a 10-inch concrete wall?
You could do that, um, rather than a, um, block wall, you could do that right through this section, you know, just for a short section and transition.
How high would the wall have to be?
Uh, let's see, I think, yeah, it's the center's on this one here, so that would be, 50, that's 46, so that's a four, four and a half foot wall, uh, right in here.
And how far would the wall, how long would that wall have to be?
It would extend, you know, just extend down in here, something like this.
Start at 30 feet?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, 30, 40 feet, something like that, you see? So you have a wall right there, you have a section, you need a little section right in here.
You need some on the other side as well?
Yeah, you need a little on the other side, just because we're sort of tight to the line, you know, the grade of the actual area. So that kind of limits you and then the pinch points right at the corner of the building,
Wouldn't be pretty if you could drive Z-sheet in there and save yourself all kinds of wrong. About that much, beat it out of there in a day. You don't gotta get down, what, six feet, seven feet?
What was that John, you gonna put in there?
Z-sheet, like drive sheeting, yeah, only this wide, might take up as much space as you can inside, you could paint it, whatever, it would just save you a lot of space. Anybody with an excavator, a vibrating hammer, could do that?
Yeah, bang it in.
Yep, like six feet, tow it in, maybe take 10 feet to be safe, it's not going anywhere ever, especially if you use Core 10 steel. That way you could make the driveway much less sloped, not infringe on the neighbor. Something to think about. I don't know, Bill, we're to prove a 60% grade.
Scott, did you have anything else? Jason?
Still nothing.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments. Um, just having, uh, communicated with the applicant already, um, typically when we receive any plans, whether it's a modification or a new plan, and they have drainage calculations that typically, typically get reviewed by our peer review consultant. This project's already been reviewed by the peer review consultant when it first came in May, however, with these modifications-
Significant change.
Uh, I'm not sure what level of significant they are, cause I'm not an engineer, but, uh, but our, our standard is if there's a drainage calculations, it's usually reviewed by the peer review consultant. Now, how the board will receive with that, if this is a manner of, uh, getting that peer review, and I could, I could be wrong here, but I, it, the peer review estimate we received might include also like conformance with zoning bylaws and et cetera, we might just be looking for them to review the drainage calculations and impervious surface, but perhaps that draws the cost out for the applicant. I think what, what the pressing matter now is time and unfortunately the board wouldn't meet again till November 7th, so I just wanted to make that clear, that the, our standard procedure usually calls for peer review, and, uh, the big thing that I mentioned earlier is to ensure that the abutters are satisfied with the amount.
Scott, how, what you feeling there?
So you're saying the peer review would just be for drainage calculations, which we know are less though, right? That's the thing. For a less impervious surface, but more, uh, more diversion into the system, I believe, cause you're tying the roof drain-
Yeah, or running it the other way.
Does the, does the system size increase?
Yeah, we just put a little extra capacity, just to correlate what's in here.
John?
Would it be wise to give the abutters to sign an agreement that what you proposed here and what was proposed at this meeting, they're gonna agree to? Otherwise you could come in here again. And again.
Could you send the minutes?
To the chair, it's just my response. The other reason I'm, uh, focused on the abutter comments now is we're super led from your attorney, so I want to make sure your attorney is satisfied and you guys are happy, uh, in, in response to that, so, um, otherwise it was a request to rescind the plan. So, I, I'd like to have something in writing from the abutters in contrary to that, otherwise that request still stands.
Correct.
All right, I can have our attorney draw something up.
Yeah, it's-
Okay.
If you're satisfied, so I'll make sure you mark it out.
Well, that, you're satisfied with the fence going in?
I'm just trying to, I, the first thing we wanted to confirm was that it's not coming onto our property, and I think you answered that question by saying that there's an existing swale there that pitches everything.
Yeah, on the roadway, proposed, but yeah, then the roadway is gonna swell.
And then our second concern was the snow storage and what's gonna happen when it, when it stockpiles as it does, you know what I mean? You get two or three storms and stockpile, so how, how do we prevent it from going, getting pushed on our property? The fence will-
Well, we got the fence issue, the grade that John brought up, those, that type of thing that you said you could put in the ground, that wouldn't take a lot of space and you drag them in, and then, and, and with the advent of that, we have this letter from your attorney, I think that maybe we should have Graves do the peer review. And let them advise on the drainage so that it's not just us deciding that, yeah, we think it won't be any increase or any problem, and maybe they can look at whatever's proposed for the wall or the fence to prevent it from going over there, or you could make some suggestions to them, and maybe work with them closely so you can-
Thing about a chain link fence is that, you know, it's gonna let snow go through, you know, so I'm just trying to block it from going, but-
It'll go, it'll go through, but it'll kind of stop at a point, it'll like lock in there, it's, it's not like the handbrake machine where it'll go through, it'll kind of stop. If you put a cyclone, I mean, a stockade or anything solid, it's just gonna knock it down, when, as it builds up, and then it'll look like heck. So, I think that would be about the best thing unless someone has a better suggestion. It might have to be a six-foot chain link sent fence.
Yeah, and in this, I've been looking in this corner here, the grades can be pulled back to, almost create a little bowl, um, you know, a little, almost a berm on the back side, you know, like two or three feet.
Pitch it from the driveway upward where the fence is going?
Yeah, in this location, once you get here, then it's pitched the opposite way, but in this very corner here, if you get some pitch back at that driveway-
It's gonna fill the graves, you know, the grave putting to get, to be prepared for-
Under the spot where it's gonna be pushing down there, so.
I think we should let them draw up whatever they are coming up with, have them meet with Graves and let Graves review whatever they're showing that's new, inclusive of the grade and everything else.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, just elaborate, uh, this being a follow-up review for an engineer who's already done the review, it's roughly what I'm seeing, about half the price of a standard review, so they're looking at like $12.50 for this follow-up review, it could be less than that if we're just focusing on the new area. Uh, so, uh, the point being, and I know it's time, so if this doesn't prohibit you from, still don't work on site, you have an approved plan, uh, it's just the area that's modifying that, that I'd suggest holding, uh, for site work, so, uh, any other work you guys can still continue to do as long as it's not being affected.
Now, we're not trying to cause you to spend more money by any means, but, you know, if it needs to be done, because we have a, a letter from their attorney and we, you know, it's input you on guard that for everybody's purpose, that we should look at it.
Sure, and, and not just that, Mr. Chairman, uh, you're increasing the research chamber and that runoff, make sure you're not creating a situation that floods out of your own property and going to any group, so.
So can, just so I understand, you're, you're looking for a letter from our attorney kind of rescinding, rescinding what he sent?
Yeah, or anything to the contrary, otherwise it's-
Well, we're also gonna have to have an agreement between Impact Fitness and the Auburn Industrial, kind of memorializing that, and if it was just on the plan, you know, I think that would probably be the easiest thing.
That's easy, yeah, just prep them that and-
What did you guys have to say?
Come to an agreement and put it on the plan and we'll have a peer review, then how do they go, you can talk to Graves and maybe if they got it done in three days, they can get it to them and it's ready for the next meeting. Maybe, I don't think there's, is there any other questions anybody has on anything else here, so that when they come, we don't bring it up then and extend it again?
Nope.
As we said, Matt said you can still keep working on all your other stuff.
So this is in, my question here, this, so I, I understand this is just one-way traffic going in off of Route 20?
Well, it's coming out too, but they're not taking a left out of it.
Yeah, there's no left turns out.
They could take a right out.
What about here?
And here, there's no, uh, right, the left's in, so it's restricting this movement coming in, uh, everything else is allowed, just so that-
So if this hair comes out, it can come, come out like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
It has to go across there?
Yeah.
Okay.
The thing was here, if this is backed up, you don't want a car sitting here, waiting to get in with people coming through the light. Here, if you go to sit here and wait on the site to get out, that's-
Most people would probably, if it was all jammed up, they'd probably have to go all the way around.
Yeah, another little straight loop.
So that's the, you know, it just, you know, inconveniences our own customers, it wouldn't, this would be a safety concern. If you were sitting here, you know, for a few minutes while waiting, while the traffic's backed up and people are coming through the intersection, you don't want to back it up into the intersection and everything.
Okay.
You don't want to get that 120 feet of cube.
Cause you don't want, and I like it's very busy right there at times.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
So, does everybody know what they're doing?
Yep.
Any questions?
Let's see, I guess, I think all the Z-piles that you mentioned, do you guys use those in town? You guys comfortable?
Z-sheet?
Yeah.
I, no, I, I don't recall it at all.
Okay.
Currently used?
Yeah, I've seen him around, just didn't know if you guys were comfortable with him in town.
If you, if you talk to enough, uh, power drivers, they probably pick up some used stuff.
Yeah.
A lot cheaper than new stuff, a lot cheaper.
So with the, uh, just a light note, so with the Z-sheet, that's not allow us to still have a two-way traffic with a lower-
Possibly.
If you're gonna save space on either side, you can actually have a lower grade there, make it an 8% or 10% grade instead of 16, you'd be able to cut the, cut the road in.
Yeah, we'll have to look at to see how that affects, you know, if we can fit that in, cause we still need some type of guards on the sides and stuff like that.
Oh, that would be a guard.
Yeah, cause you have to extend it up beyond, um, so that's a look and everything.
Four feet out of the ground?
Yeah.
That's your guard.
They, the interlocking channels?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And right now, there's not, there's nothing there now, right?
No, cause we matched grade right at the building right there, that was the constraint point.
Yeah, here.
Seven grade there, yeah.
And you know what they, the average cost of like a Z-sheet, I mean, any estimates on pileup?
We can look them up.
Look them up.
It's kills about a dollar twenty-five a pound right now, so.
We can look those up, so.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if you guys used them in town.
Yeah.
I'd assume they painted green or whatever, make it look halfway nice.
Bye, next year.
This is a suggestion to save space.
Just another option.
It just saves a lot of space.
Any other questions, Scott, John?
I'm also.
I'll make the motion to continue. Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, 11 to 7.
My name is Chairman, I just wanna, just kinda throw this out there, so this, since this is already kind of an approved plan, we already have a draft decision made up, soon as these things are buttoned up and a peer review's done, I can have a draft decision for this ready at the meeting.
Okay. Can we coordinate with them directly too?
With Graves?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as I'm, as long as I'm involved too. Oh, whatever, yes.
With his copy and everything?
Okay.
But we can go back and forth with them freely and-
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing, uh, I just wanted, I'm gonna talk to them, see if their estimate's firm, if it's, if it's something they could do less and they gave them a price, I just need that payment from the applicant in order to engage their services, so.
Okay.
Do that as soon as we can.
That's good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a 7-10 public hearing. The applicant is Masad Family LLC requesting an approval of definitive subdivision plan The applicant is Masad Family LLC requesting an approval of the definitive subdivision plan under section three point three and site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the urban zoning bylaws for realignment of a portion of fifty-four faith ab, the site of Diamond Oil Group's GM service facility.
Mr. Chairman, would you state your name please?
I'm Joseph Simon, General Manager at Diamond Triple A. I have to apologize, but Matt, do you guys have a plan third?
So through the chair, what I have is the applicant engineer, my Scott Waterman Design Associates, provided us with a PDF plan to the members. I was able to circulate Thursday, about thirty minutes after the packets went out. The guy should have got it electronically, but we haven't received the physical copies yet. So either way, we did, we were able to distribute the draft. Again, it's a un-stamped version of the plan, so it doesn't have any engineer stamp on it, but, so we don't have the actual physical copy received by the town clerk yet. However, there are some, we could still go over some of the items that were addressed under the peer review and some of the comments that Mr. Regan had.
You have a motion to open the hearing?
It's a, well, assuming it's a, you're right. Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, at your last meeting, we did close it despite it being continued, so you do need to open.
Motion up in the meeting? Second. All those in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
We don't need to do that anymore. We continue, okay? So we know.
All right.
Well, don't be upset.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there were some items here that were addressed that we noticed. Just in our review with Mr. Regan's comments, it looked like there was still one item that needs a little touch up. It could be a conditional thing. But most of them were addressed, which was nice. The Graves letter had one item where there were still some oh boy, what are they? Five points on a sheet that needed to be revised with coordinates. I believe it's bounds with an easement. Could be wrong. But seems more of a question for Mr. Scott. I'm just not sure if the amendment's been made because I wouldn't know my look.
Yeah, according to Mr. Scott, according to Mr. Scott, he told me, you know, the three things are vice plans. According to Graves' comments, were all addressed. According to Mr. Regan's concerns, those were all addressed. These are from what he told me. And, you know, all the comments from the last meeting were all addressed, you know, in the new plan.
Yeah, the, Mr. Regan and I went over his and there was one minor thing that we can touch up, so that's, that's all good. And according to Mr. Scott's email on earlier this week, said they revise the lotting and easement plan per Graves' comments to add, I believe. Not sure what that reads, but to add language to several of the property corners, the survey monuments. That's the one piece from the Graves' letter, so according to his email, it's been added. Actually, I don't know how to verify that. So, you know, it's looking for lotting and easement plans, but without a physical copy of the plan is actually, however. Greater than those items is the actual procedure between subdivision and site plan review. These could be some items that could be touched up on site plan review, I'm assuming. So what's in front of us today is the option to close out the subdivision hearing and then decide how we wanted to proceed with the site plan review. Reason being, we understand that there's construction of a new roadway with a portion to be discontinued that's actually still on town property, it's still a town road. So there's going to be language generated from the applicant's attorneys, this is Steve Madaus, for the May town meeting warrant article that would make it possible for the town to transfer the land to Diamond in some capacity. So what that means is the boards should consider a phased approach to their subdivision approval. Phase being, complete the roadway work, have that closed at town meeting under the subdivision approval. And then the site plan review would have to be picked up later at that time or after town meeting. So what we have is the ability to approve or deny, in theory, the roadway. But the actual site plan itself isn't something that the town could remark on at this time because it's still our own property. So until that roadway's discontinued and the new roadway is accepted at town meeting, the site plan can't be reviewed or approved at this time. It, it, it.
The site plan is only the road?
No, it's the parking and all the additions that make it.
Parking, the building, the, on that strip that's in between, where the circle of faith ab was gonna be discontinued as we speak.
Correct. Now, it's all been, well, at least the subdivision piece has been reviewed by peer review consultant. And that's all well and good, aside from the comments from Mr. Scott. It's the, it's the, the site plan piece itself that we can't remark on because it's, it's a plan that shows a design on town land. So it's, that piece, it's up to the applicants to determine is whether or not to continue this for several months while we wait for town meeting. Or it's within the board's purview to request the applicant or deny, but I'd almost ask for the applicant to withdraw or consider withdrawing with the board to waive any future fees in order if that does happen. So that's assuming the roadway's built, town meeting happens, and then site plan review is ready to rock and roll the second that happens. Which has to be applied. So we sit, we're in an interesting spot right now while we wait for town meeting and land ownership is in some of the planning works here very often. So it's, it's a little bizarre.
Well, we're looking for approval on the subdivision, right?
So you can do roadway.
Yeah.
That'd be the phase piece of the subdivision.
And we can do that.
Assuming we have plans.
And we don't have them yet.
I don't have physical copies of plans stamped.
And I don't get it by one of them.
What I have is a, yeah, what I have is a non-finished plan that was sent by email. And Mr. Scott, he knew he was giving me that. He said, we'll get to the physical ones as soon as we can. Unfortunately, they didn't come before today.
He, he told me that, and again, I don't know.
No.
What, what, he told me that, you know, the physical mylar plans, would you refer to them as? Was that something that he'd bring over?
That would look like something like this.
Yeah. Then he'd sign, you know, he'd sign and bring over. But as far as everything goes on that piece that was emailed out to you, that's basically our, you know, our plan.
Right. So the mylar was chairman, would be the endorsement. It's if the company endorsement plans, they can sign them, we'll get them recorded, et cetera, they'll come with the decision. The decision has to be made before you guys sign those. So it's, board in theory, because we've beaten this horse dead, if not already, so I think a lot of the items have been addressed. It's just a matter of closing it out, possibly voting at the next meeting just to make it official, assuming we receive those.
So we should have the plans by then.
Yeah, I would imagine. They're, they're nearly, if not done, possibly in the mail.
I think I should ask a question to the chair. If you phase this, like phase one is the roadway, they get all that done, make it all apart, all that done. Phase two is part of the land that is towns now where the old roadway is. And then that could happen after town meeting, correct? To vote on that. Whatever it's gonna wanna go here. I know they're looking to obtain that piece of land, build it, the roadway.
Sure.
It has to be approved at town meeting too, doesn't it?
Yes. So that's, that's the piece.
Well, we said that there was gonna be, we thought there might be some problem with how you write it. Because that not land would normally, I think, is it's abandoned, would go up for public auction.
So through the chair, Attorney Madaus is writing what, applicant's attorney is working with town council to make that language appropriate. So to answer Mr. Regan's question, it's, the phased piece would just be the subdivision as kind of phase one. It's the roadway, completion of the roadway, the town meeting and all that wrapped in one. So they're not gonna do any other relevant site work that isn't a part of that roadway being finished.
New road going in.
Yes, that's it. So the rest of the site work would be the site plan application separate, okay? So if the board is inclined to close any hearing, it would be just for the subdivision for completion of that roadway alone. In accordance with, so assuming that some of your comments, Mr. Regan might involve the roadway. Assuming some of these pieces did, you would know better than I.
Yeah, the most special hydrant, that's the only one that was left of the, messed up all the height, the rest of me, correct? Judged by the PDF, but it's not stamped, so.
Correct. Close the first one. The PDF over screen. It's this one. It's the one that we received electronically, but it wasn't signed off or dated by the agent. So obviously, because it's electronic, so. That was just to circulate it along those.
Hey, buddy, bring up the hydrant so you can understand what I'm talking about, if you don't mind that, please.
This page. This one. The next one.
Two to the right. It's available.
This side. This one, right?
Yeah. Lot of lot. Where it says, provide four cubic feet, that was supposed to be provide one cubic yard. It never said anything about a cubic yard, a flat stone or concrete under it. You got the cubic yard in the wrong place. That four cubic feet should read one cubic yard, flat stone, or concrete block under the hydrant, it's fine.
It's a minor touch up?
Minor.
It's, it could be added as a condition, that's, that's fine with me.
Because four cubic feet won't allow the hydrant, the volume of the hydrant to drain.
And since the board does have, I'm only calling it outstanding with the Graves' letter because Mr. Scott's not here to answer it. Assuming that could be an item that's conditioned also, it's a matter of adding it details.
So we're trying to decide whether we vote to approve or disapprove a subdivision plan. And just to sum it up for every, what do we miss? The final prints with the standards engineer? And Graves' comments? We have their comments.
Yes, we have those.
So is there anything else that was from Graves that we need?
No, sir.
And if, just to add the conditions corrected that John brought up with the hydrant, how would you do that?
By condition.
Scott?
Also.
Also. All good. Huh?
I don't think there's public comment.
Dick, public comment?
Aye.
We have to make a motion, right?
Yes, you need a motion to close.
How do you wanna condition it? Because you said we'd condition it.
So you're looking at two conditions to address Mr. Regan's comments, complete. I'm just gonna, these are previewing. Address Mr. Regan's comments and address the final review comments from the Graves' peer review. And any standard conditions you wish to apply. First, will you have a motion to close?
We have a motion to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
And then you need a motion to approve with conditions. Make the motion to approve with conditions? Second.
All those in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
And if you'd like, we can go over standard conditions. Most of them are straightforward. And before we do that, I believe we need one more motion to continue the site plan review portion of the public hearing.
Make the motion to continue the site plan review portion?
I'm so good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, do we need any extension signatures?
No, yes, just for that one, which is questioned.
You're able to sign that?
Yes. Just put diamond realignment and then site plan. And here are the conditions. First item is abide by approvals requirements of all other town boards, departments, commissions. Strike development according to approved plans is number two. Any future modifications to approved plans apart from any conditions set forth by the decision must be formally submitted to the board for review. To conform to all requirements subdivision control. Construction hours.
Eight to four thirty, Monday through Friday. That's fine with me because there's not a lot of houses, they're residential there at all. How do you guys feel?
Fine, yeah, there's no residential there. I have no concerns. Regarding the number of lots. I'm inclined to strike that condition because.
Yes.
Well, it is two lots. I don't believe they're changing that, but it's the roadway that technically is a lot. And if it becomes part of their property, we've added a lot, and then we need them to come back to modify their decision. So I don't wanna create a situation based on, based on that.
For Rule eight five, setting in clearing trees with a diameter of twelve inch or greater will be prohibited, except where incidental to the construction of the roadway utilities, drainage houses, and driveways.
We can keep that out, though that's gonna be an issue.
The deed for the drainage parcel containing the detention point shall be transferred to the town block and by the applicant upon public acceptance of streets. Now that.
That's the, I believe that. I believe we should strike that. Because that is part of our subdivision rules. Strike that. Also strike eight with train, street numbers for lots.
Strike seven and eight. Nine, the applicant shall submit a complete edition of the drainage report to both town engineer and office of planning board.
I won't go, sir. Strike nine.
Strike nine. Ten, developer shall apply for and secure a performance guarantee with the urban planning board in accordance with section three, three, one, two of the urban zoning, of the urban subdivision rules and regulations for the construction of the road known as and faith ab, and the installation of municipal services within two years of the date of definitive subdivision approval. Failure to apply for and secure a performance guarantee that two-year period shall result in the automatic rescission of definitive subdivision approval.
Yes, absolutely.
Ten stays, how are we gonna, who's gonna give us the basis for that?
Wouldn't be a bond yet. It'd just be a performance guarantee as a covenant with the endorsement of the plan.
They're gonna figure out with the donor.
They would do that once the road's brought to, right before top code.
Like buildings.
Yeah, when they're ready to release lots, assuming town meeting's taken care of by them.
Okay, eleven, the applicant must abide by all regulations, conditions of the eleventh amended order as set forth in accordance with NGL chapter one thirty-two, section eight, eleven, and twelve, in addition to NGL chapter one thirty-two, eight, section one, and this, strike.
Yep, we'll strike that as well.
Everybody okay? Any other condition questions?
Only other item I have, Mr. Chairman, is to put a condition on here to the effect, and I'll, I'll come up with better language. Once I'm writing it, to the effect that the remaining lots will not be released until roadway is accepted at town meeting under agreement between the applicant and the, and town. That pending, so I'm gonna write that as up for debate right now. So make sure it's clean line. And at our next meeting, Mr. Chairman, while we're looking at the decision, I believe there were some waivers that we needed to vote on. I'm just not pulling them out of the file right now. And one of them's for, one of them's probably for the, the separate lot for the detention point. So just similar regular subdivision waivers, we can vote on at the next meeting, but it's not gonna affect you.
We'll have more listening.
There are a list of sheet that I'm just not seeing right now. That, that shouldn't be an issue. Let's, that should cover it, Mr. Chairman. And if I may, you guys are deciding what to do with the site plan app, if it's going to keep getting continued. I'd almost, I'd almost recommend it gets withdrawn and then reapply for, if the board's willing to waive the fees, but something to discuss with David, what you guys wanna do with that. It's, gotta get your, the road, the town meeting, the agreement with the town, swap the land and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Concrete, I'm sure, before David wants to pull his application, so. However, you guys wanna proceed with that. It's, the town's involved too, so if we had, the board's inclined to continue it, we wanna make sure that both parties are satisfied. I'm, I'm fine keeping it continued as long as we need to, but if it's sensible for you guys to withdraw and then reapply, and the board was inclined to waive these, I'd support that. That's fair.
Scott, how are you all right with the waiving of the fees?
Yes. Agreed.
I'm all set.
All right. We'll keep it on the agenda, the site plan review only, but I'll have a decision draft after next meeting.
Okay, we don't need any more motions.
No, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, say, number discussion. Seventy-one Curtis Street, Packer Chark Farm subdivision, section six, point three, point one, you said Matthew Warren.
Oh, no, I have to discuss this, just depends on how much time you guys have.
Thought you said this happened.
I'm just kidding. Uh, I'll, I'll be ready quick with this. So, um, in April twenty fifteen, we, the board approved the subdivision for seventy-one Curtis Street. This is a project that includes six new single-family home lots on a large lot. I forget how many acres that parcel is, but, um, four point two acres. No, this was, um, at the time, it was, uh, Rockaway Tenelli was the representative, the landowner.
Is it the piece that, is it past Curtis Street when you go down and turn the corner?
It's before the corner on the left-hand side.
Where that, where you had the road going?
Yes. It's, uh, right after, I think that's Stonebridge Road, it's after that. Yes.
Oh, all right, the one on the, yeah.
Yes, this was a, um, interesting proposal.
Where the old farmhouse was and-
Yes.
It sits on the top of the bank and the others as you go around.
That's across from, uh, Mr. Daniel's office, uh, that's up on the seventy. Uh, he came at a lot of our hearings. So this, um, all, despite being approved, I think I circulated a decision out with, with, uh, members. There are some conditions on here that haven't been followed. Number one, the big one being, uh, widen the public portion of Curtis Street to a minimum of twenty feet. Distances listed in the conditions of the decision is items couldn't, not, or worked on when the town was working on the road because the applicant was to do those in conjunction with the town. That did not happen. There was a-
What was the reason?
Uh, that either they weren't ready or, or not, but they never contacted the town enough. So there was a couple of other decisions too. They're supposed to get the numbers for the proposed houses from the, from the town assessor, they hadn't done that. And these are amendments that's supposed to be made to the plan as conditions of approval prior to getting the plan endorsed. And another thing was they were supposed to go to the conservation commission to get their approval prior to us endorsing the plan. None of these things were done.
And we endorsed the plan?
We hadn't. So, uh, that's the thing, they haven't come back with a covenant or a Mylar to have the plan endorsed and it's been over two years.
Yeah, two, three.
Right. So in our regulations under six-three-one, um, the applicants have ninety days to respond to some of the conditions of the decision as it's passed into gilfer under those second. So, um, it, it, it appears that the applicant may be looking to revitalize this, I'm not even sure at this point, but it's my recommendation at this time to-
They haven't built that.
No, they haven't done it. But it's to request that the board, um, hold a public meeting on November seventh at our next meeting and request that the applicant or the developer, the meeting, to provide an update on this project. But I believe our public meeting on November seventh would be a discussion to this, to discuss the rescission of the approved plan.
Couldn't we rescind it now?
We have to uncover me.
And you'll prepare all the reasons why, you'll have it right there and let's cry to our vote so we can see it nice and fresh.
Yes.
Yeah, and Mr. Cole was there, I believe.
Threat.
At all those meetings.
That's correct.
Down on the left where it goes in, right beyond Stonebridge.
Yes, the butt's his rock.
Yeah. It was, uh, it was concerned about water. Drainage there, and I'm not sure if they're gonna, they were gonna fix some of that or do it, yeah.
And they were gonna go to conservation and that, that didn't happen.
Didn't do conservation, didn't do the road, or anything.
Right.
And they asked, and that, they came to you to wanna start it or?
No.
How long is that good for?
Well, that's the thing, uh, we have expirations and timelines based on, uh, plans that are endorsed. And this is, it hasn't been endorsed. So, uh, that's where the saving grace, if you will, in our, uh, in our regulations is the ninety-day provision to comply with conditions listed in the decision. If we didn't have conditions that called for modifications to the plan, we wouldn't have anything to go by.
And they just get like constructive approval?
No, they, they still have their approval from us, there's just, there's no timeline in which to endorse the plan, subdivision law.
That's something that, though.
Oh, it's, it's stable, it's just how it is, there's challenges to it regularly. So that's just that, there's gotta be six, seven other subdivisions in town that have been approved and never built that are just kinda sitting in limbo automatically.
Well, it's like Bryn Mawr Estates.
Well.
That was from nineteen sixty-two or six fifty-eight or something like that.
Was actively being worked on, so that's, but, uh, others, uh, have endorsed plans that expired but have automatically rescinded because that was the provision in the covenant. Now, there's no covenant.
Because they were sorry.
Yes. Yes.
So it's better for us that they're not signed or?
Oh, it's better that they're signed. But in this case, our, our, our only piece is that there's conditions that call for modifications to the plan that were never done.
And those were real concerns at the time with the road and the other stuff?
Road widening, uh, getting a listing from assessors, uh, ready to plan, and, um, going, uh, getting approval from conservation.
Because there was something with the road there, it constricted a little bit in that area, and then it would've just gone beyond and down around and would've been washing that out down into the river ice.
Yeah, ultimately, we did approve the plan. I mean, it was, it was a solid plan, but there were conditions I needed to touch on.
Like the one that they were gonna work with the town, when the town did what they were gonna do.
Yes, which did not occur.
So that'll come up at next meeting?
Yes.
You'll put it on the agenda?
Yes, if the board is inclined to make a motion for me to do that.
We have a motion. We're gonna have to put that on the agenda.
Make that motion.
At your, Packer Chark Farm subdivision.
Be the contact involved, request their attendance on November seventh public, to discuss the rescission of the plan.
Also, good.
All those in favor? Aye. There's a vote.
Just a quick question to the chair, Matt. If they don't show, it's an automatic rescission.
The board can do what they will.
Okay. Bryn Mawr Estate subdivision, bond reduction request, street lighting and landscape, but there should be nothing there. Associate number, same thing, if you know anyone that would like to be, tell them, give Matt their name or get them to call them. Additional content? Decision for site plan approval, one seventy-four Leicester Street, two oh two and two oh four Bryn Mawr after water tower site.
Yes, sir. So, um, I had, I watched the public hearings on this and unfortunately the board did miss a step. But, um, you guys covered a lot, the only thing we didn't do was blow down waivers. Some of it was just happening. But, uh, it's just need a vote from the board to grant the waivers. And this was for, um, the water tank project. The waivers were from lighting, landscaping, and drainage calculations. Dr. Adams, they didn't need to provide for this kind of project. So just looking for a vote to, uh, grant those waivers.
And do them all at once?
As required, yeah, you can do them all in one vote.
And we do, are we right to do them all at once or not?
It's all one.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to grant the waivers. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
So, that being said, very, added that, let's just need to decide.
Day, today's.
Yes, sir. I do have another decision that's ready also. The other decision I have is for Prime Auto Group, their modification. It's sort of on September twenty-sixth. Minor changes to the footprint of the building, they had a new architect for their plan, so they, yeah, with some, some minor adjustments. You guys, uh, discussed it with Mr. Coyle and, uh, approved the project ends. The only language I added to the decision was that all previous conditions from the original decision dated November thirtieth, twenty sixteen remain in effect. That's the only thing I have. It's self-standard. Those need signatures also? Nice work. Took a while to get caught up. Good work, mine very high. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I did, uh, email the September fault minutes this morning. If anyone got a chance to read them and would like to make a vote, great. If not, the carrots in the next meeting.
Was looking ready to think when they popped up, but I didn't have time to read.
The only other item I have, Mr. Chairman, is-
Is anybody that, oh, you, you three read the minutes?
Yeah. Officially, our minutes pressing twenty, out today, unfortunately.
Letter to correspondence, a letter to Slatman regards approval of housing. Letter to Slatman regards support of forty B in two thousand seventeen, well, it's, the letter.
Yeah. Those are done, those were, uh, yeah, those were-
We have to sign them or anything?
Nope, no, sign those and just, just so you guys can see them.
Two thousand and seventeen CP TC for workshop schedule.
I'll just lightly, yeah. The, the two local workshops, one's October twenty-fifth, it's a Wednesday, it's six-thirty, it's CM RPC. It's, uh, planning with community support. It's, uh, how to incorporate, uh, communities' comments into planning. And the other one is the following Wednesday, November first, it's, uh, creating and implementing master plans. So I'll be attending both of those. If anyone wishes to attend also, let me know and I'll register you as tunnel cover.
Can't build a segment.
They usually serve some form of food, you know, but- But, uh, I believe that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Cause I don't try.
We have one last vote, even though we've already done this, but we still have a formal vote to hold our next meeting on November seventh since it's off our regular schedule.
Do we have a motion to hold our next meeting on the seventh of November eleventh, seventh?
I'll make the motion at our next meeting on November seventh, two thousand seventeen.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes, we're gonna wait? Next meeting, November seventh. Do we have a motion to adjourn? If you don't have anything else, then, and you don't have anything else.
Thank you much, adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned.